Welcome to the August 16, 2018 meeting of the Town of Sherburne Select Board. We have a quorum. Two of our members had, one that's on vacation, one had an unavoidable conflict, professional conflict. One of the things I think I'd like to discuss at a future board meeting is whether or not we should go back to set schedule with five members, inevitably somebody has a conflict. But the, call the meeting to order and ask David Williams, the town administrator, to read the proposed agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll amend or approve the agenda and then have public comment. Consideration of consent agenda as a payroll warrant, a one-day liquor license for Pauline Bones for the Grange Fair, then minutes of July 11, 2018, and July 25, 2018. Then consideration of financial and operational matters, a request for motion to proceed with bids for a bond anticipation note, Heidi Doyle, town treasurer, and financial update, Sharon McPherson, finance director and accountant with Heidi Doyle, town treasurer. Then Town Forest Committee and trustees of the reservation to discuss surrounding the possibility of hunting at Rocky Narrows, and Dave Colleen from the Forest Committee is here. Then library project schedule update with Mary Moore, library trustee chair, and estimated budget impacts, a potential fall town meeting with dates. Under routine business, town administrator report, select board member reports, and an executive session is scheduled under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21-6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or value of real property as it pertains to two Leland Farms pursuant to generalized Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam 449 Massachusetts 444 227, and MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21-3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation, litigating position of the town, and the chair so declares regarding library. And then adjournment, not to, the executive session is to adjourn and not to return to open session.
Terrific. Any amendments or changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Terrific. The town is named as an additional insured on the one-day liquor license, so this is.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda?
Second it. All in favor? Terrific. I did not have any, the minutes were terrific. Anyone have any typos on the, on the minutes? I guess we should have done that before we approved the consent agenda. Looks like you had one there.
It's a couple of questions, actually, and I make sure. And if you want, I can look at the video. But comment on page two of the, on July 11th, July 11th, page two, the big paragraph on there.
Which one?
It starts, page two of the minutes on July 11th.
Okay.
It said, "Due to the size of development, due to the size of the development plan, it was discussed about the possibility of the town sharing the cost of the wastewater treatment plant, and in doing that provided a sewer district in downtown area," blah, 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 blah. Did he talk about sharing it, or did he talk actually about them funding it? They specify one or the other? And we should look at the video, but something I think is important enough to make sure we get right.
They did talk about sharing.
I don't know.
How we look at the video.
Yeah, that's what, that in particular might have enough ramifications. I'd like to kind of confirm that. I kind of remember them saying that they would at least maintain it, or do whatever, and just, it's just important enough that I think it's worth double checking.
I will absolutely reject.
Terrific. So why don't we make the approval of those minutes conditional upon confirming that?
Okay.
And if not, we'll revisit it our next meeting.
Okay. If I make a change, I'll read that.
Terrific. There were no public comments, so let's move on to item two, which are financial operational matters. Heidi, you're up.
So we're here tonight to proceed with getting permission to go out for a ban on the items that were approved at the last town meeting in April. I think you have the list of items and what we were looking to get. Timing on it is that we get a vote from you to proceed tonight, get it ready to go out for bid, get the preliminary legal councils, and then have everything ready to have the bid awarded on September 6, your next meeting to sign. And then probably shortly after that, around September 14, we'd receive the funds for that ban into our account. We will probably also have to be looking at a revenue anticipation note, and I will be doing a cash flow analysis with our new financial advisor and on September 6, at that meeting, probably proceed and bring that forward to you as a motion on that. But for today, the motion I'd like to get is to proceed with the ban, with the items listed.
Bans are very typical to do this time of year. I think we've done them most years.
Right. To go in particular, so people would know, it's including the docks at Farm Pond, the sweeper for the CM and D, the police cruisers, works on the town building, including Pine Hill School and DS Regional Schools, and down payments for fire engines two and six, and the total is 1.280,364.00 million. Interest rates right now are going up on bans, as they have been doing so, anticipating higher twos. They said they're getting close to the threes, and they expect another rate increase actually in September, and one more before the end of the year.
Heidi, can you remind me, the Warren article for the two fire engines totaled just over a million dollars, a million, $50,000.
Correct.
You're funding half of that at this point?
There's two down payments, and also you have to pay for equipment, according to what was submitted by the chief, and that totaled 525,000.
So when would the other 525 be funded?
Usually upon completion of the vehicles.
Okay.
So, and so my guess, it could be nine months to 12 months after that. I'm not quite sure of the exact timing. I think he was out this past week at the plant, probably going to have some more information next week for us on an update of timing.
He said earliest July, most likely October of next year.
If we can, if interest rates are rising, does it make sense to do the full 1,500,000 at this point, or is that something we can't do?
We have to be able to spend them within 18 months, so I just, and that would probably fit within the 18 months. So if we can get a commitment from him that it'll definitely be delivered by this time, we could probably put the whole amount on the ban.
That would be great, because the worst-case scenario would be that you have to re-up the ban for one more year and make a principal.
Right.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Does that make sense, George? I don't know. I mean, this is...
So that would, that would put it at 1.8.
Okay, so then we amend, okay, great. Mend the amount to 1.805,364.
You're not actually borrowing the money until we need it, so you're not paying interest on it. You're just locking in a rate, is that?
No, we will be, the ban would be, we would be getting the money, and we're doing, like, we'll do a one-year ban, so that we'd be paying interest for one year on it.
Oh, that, that may cut against it, then.
Yeah, that's why I'm just wondering, does it make sense to do it that far in advance? If, I mean, the, the cost of the interest?
On $500,000.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think, if we don't need it.
No, because it could be, it could be like $3,000, you don't know.
Yeah, that's true.
It would be in hand, though, in the event that it was done earlier. If it's done earlier, you're in a bad position.
And there are issuance costs, so I guess that's one of the things we're trying to weigh, is the issuance cost as well.
And you'd offset the interest earned from whatever it being.
It would probably be a slight difference.
I mean, what do you recommend? Do you recommend getting it all now, or?
Well, we're going to have to go have a bond issue this year.
We're going to have to go, yeah. Probably going to have to go anyway. Then who knows what the next town meeting one is going to be?
Yeah.
So we're probably going to end up rolling some of these things over.
So the issuance costs are probably a wash, and it's really a bet on the interest we have to pay versus the increase, our predicted increase in interest rates, so I...
I would rather be, I'd rather more comfortable saying now, especially with the increased rate, go ahead forward with it, just especially have it on hand. What if they can deliver it in August?
No, that makes sense.
There's also some benefit to having cash on hand.
Yeah. Absolutely. Especially this time of year, since we don't have a tax payment coming till November.
I guess it is.
Well, we took yours off.
What's your inclination, Eric and George?
I would say do the higher amount. I would...
Do the full amount.
If that's what Heidi's recommending.
I don't know if the interest actually adds up to over 18 months if it goes like a half percent or something like that.
But then again, I mean, if...
The cash on hand part.
It may mean that we wouldn't need as much of a revenue anticipation note.
Well, that's, that would be huge.
That's a very good point.
So, I mean, even though we were told last year that we don't do revenue anticipation notes, and now we need one.
But on that note...
I'm going to digress into that, but...
I actually gave you some supporting documents, looking back at the history.
Yes.
And we have done revenue anticipation notes.
Not, yeah.
Not the last three years, but actually historically, there's been some done.
There was some. No, I saw that.
So I did some research to figure out what was done before.
Yeah, that was...
So...
But on the notes, kind of interesting. So the fire trucks, they'll be eventually, what, 10-year bonds?
Yes.
So actually getting them sooner rather than later may make a greater impact.
10, 20, no, 20.
20, so even more so.
Yeah.
Getting them sooner rather than later will actually make a difference in the debt service.
All right.
Well, I'll make a motion to allow the treasurer to send out bids for bond anticipation note for annual town meeting, 18 Article 10 capital items, including docks, sweeper, police cruiser, town building, Pine Hill, and Dover Sherburne Regional Schools, down payments for fire engines E2 and E6 totaling, what's the total?
Million...
1,805,364.
And more, it's not down payments now, now it's for the fire.
Oh, for the fire, yes. Take out the down payment, sorry. And for fire engines E2 and E6 totaling the number Sharon said.
Yes.
So would the correct terminology be down payments and payments?
I would just say, no, I would just say down payments and just say fire engines E2 and E6.
Yes, you could just include fire engines along with the other items.
Right.
All right. I'll second. I don't think they've looked at it, so.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Terrific. Thanks, Heidi.
Okay. And I was just going to give a little update on the financial aspect of what we're doing. Just came back from Treasury School, so I have a lot of homework I have to do here. Part of the, what I'm doing as a treasurer is, and it's been strongly suggested, is you do an audit of all the banks and the local accounts to find out who has your tax ID and who's using it. I've started that process, and just to do my due diligence on that. Working with Sharon and the DOR to come up with some, and a new financial advisor, so we hope to have a cash flow analysis, and if that's something we're looking at, we'd be happy to provide that with you.
Right.
And schedules our financial advisor to come out and talk with the finance advisory committee this fall as well.
And this likely, if you...
Great. No, I'd love to be part of that.
Any other questions on what's going on with?
I had a quick question. Maybe this has already happened, and I missed it. We're talking about having a new auditor for next year. Have we start identified potential auditors?
I'm actually going to a meeting on September 5 with, it's all the finance managers from this area, so I've already sent them all an email and said I wanted to talk to you about who your auditors were, and so I'm going to get some feedback then, and then I can move it away.
Because you're going to bid out the audit?
Yes.
For a number of different firms and...
No. Well, she's exempt from the, under law, the accountant's choices for the auditor.
Oh, okay.
And then the, it's exempt from the procurement process.
I see.
So she can really just call up firms that she knows that she's interested in and have them give her quotes.
But she's going to, she's going to have, like, three different quotes, or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. So there won't, it won't really be a bid process.
Right, but it's similar to a bid process.
Yeah.
Because you don't necessarily have to take the lowest one, that's who you think's going to do the best job.
Exactly.
That's it?
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you very much. David, I think we're ahead of schedule. The next item on the agenda is the possibility of hunting at Rocky Narrows.
This is with Dave Colleen. He came in and talked to me two or three times about getting this on an agenda, so he can explain the limitations and restrictions on implementing something like this.
No, back in 2010, two different meetings, the second meeting we had with the selectmen, they approved to implement a program so that the pilot program of Town Forest Properties would start hunting. And part of that was to go along with trustees of the reservation, which borders us on forestry, and the trustees own all the way from Town Forest land at the top, right across from 69 Forest Street, all the way to the river. And they've been hunting that property for years. And they've proposed that the Town Forest connect with them at the top of the hill, all the way, and it'll go all the way down to the river and the railroad tracks. And, you know, the, the selectmen voted back in 2010 to do it. And, you know, trustees just came to me and asked if we could get together and go ahead and do it, pilot program.
So just to clarify, the trustees land there next to Rocky Narrows, that currently has hunting?
Yes, they've had it for years.
How many allows bow hunting or whatever?
Yeah, only bow hunting.
Okay.
Nothing else will ever be there, other than, all of their properties, they have hunting.
Okay.
Across the state.
Is that everything on, whatever that is, the other side of the tracks? I mean, you know, the Rocky Narrows side, that's obviously the Town Forest, but does the tracks have separation? Is the other side trustees?
Trustees are on the other side of the tracks.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
They come from Route 27 to the tracks, and then we have from there to them, and then they go all the way down to the river.
At least that explains the tree stand I saw there.
What?
It explains the tree stand I found back there.
Yes, yes. You know, they've been doing the signage for a couple of years now, just blocking off our property from their property when they were hunting. So...
Do we allow hunting on other Town Forest properties?
No. The other properties, the reason we didn't do it back in 2010, they're all too small, too narrow, they're not safe. Now Rocky's, Rocky Narrows is a large piece of property, you know, and they will go through and they will sign all of, you know, the areas.
Are there restrictions to distance? I'm sure there's...
Yes, there is. State law.
Yeah, restrictions.
500 feet.
500 feet from any hole or...
Right. Road, house.
These will not be from temporary blinds, right? This is going to be people on foot hunting?
No, mostly, mostly on tree stands.
Okay.
Actually, last year, they didn't get a single deer because there were so many walkers that they wouldn't take the shot. And most people don't see them because they're, you know, in camouflage, so.
I was in Upper Minnesota this weekend for a family wedding, and there were stands and blinds everywhere.
Right.
Just unbelievable.
Different states are different. You know, Massachusetts, oh, you can't hunt, you know, would rather have Lyme disease, and so...
So what do you need from us at this point? Is that, I guess, because if this was approved in 2010?
It was, yeah. Well, basically, I like to come back and talk to you guys about these things.
Right.
So, you know, where we did have permission back then, I was hoping Paul would say something because he was the only one left on the board from back then. So, I guess I just want to reiterate from you guys that, yes, in fact, we have it.
I, I fully support it. I don't know if it requires a formal vote. I saw for the minutes from 2010 that the Town Forest Committee formally did vote, and voted unanimously.
Yes, we did. And we actually had another meeting, voted it again, so.
So are you currently authorized to do this? Is this such a notice saying we're going to do this?
It, you got, the selectmen in 2010 did say yes to do it.
And, and the Town Forest Committee as well, presumably they...
They're still, still with it.
Okay. So you're just basically going to execute it? When's post-season? Late August, September, or something like that?
It's, the date is October 1 to November 24.
And that's when shotgun season starts, right? Late November?
After that is shotgun.
And not allowing that, just bows?
They can't, they can't do it.
Yep.
There's only, you know, we're only going to allow bow hunting.
Okay.
Private property in Sherburne can have shotguns, but not any, anything else.
I mean, there's a pretty significant deer population back there, and that essentially is my backyard, and I've gotten Lyme disease, so.
You do have it?
I had it.
You have.
Hopefully not anymore.
Good luck for them.
A lot of antibiotics.
At one point on Saddlebrook Road, half of the residents contracted Lyme disease. It's just suddenly what you... Shaun, you were the first hand up back there.
I remember watching that discussion, and it was a pretty rinky discussion. And at the time, they were really, the selectmen themselves were really just pushing to, because you'll notice, they didn't pick a parcel. They were in favor of Town Forest basically going out figuring it out. And I would suggest that, if he's asking for one parcel, because most of the parcels don't work, behind the houses on Hunting Landing Prospect wouldn't work, it's too close. Behind Highway Garage wouldn't work, it's too close to Lake Street, my house, and everyone else's. You have a parcel, I think you should vote to support it, just that one.
I don't know if a formal vote is required. I would, I would move to approve bow hunting at Rocky Narrows between October 1 and November 24, 2018.
Just to modify, would, whatever appropriate restrictions that the Town Forest Committee deems fit, if they want to put any additional restrictions on it?
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, I understand the need, but I think we need to publicize it. I know you can sign that, but I don't think that's enough. I think it needs, you need to have a law, some public feedback, and you need to have it be in the press. Because I know, I used to run Boy Scouts, and when kids go out there on hikes, not, I'm not talking people, but there might be forty picks in our office that aren't being intentionally signed. And you seem to be placing a lot of faith in your hunters not taking a shot as you, as your words were, I don't think we should place all the faith. I think people have to be made aware of what's going on, when the period is. Maybe we decide they can't do it on weekends or something like that, I don't know.
Oh, you can't hunt on Sundays?
Well, I don't, so I don't know any of the regulations, but I think people, it's not just controlling the deer, that property is used for recreation for all kinds of people and animals. So we have to balance the needs of safety of the people using it for recreation, but also the safety of people who are supposed to, to like, isn't...
Yeah, we have, the trustees are in charge of the signage and the...
Well, I don't think they should be in charge of the signage on Town Forest, if they're, they're reservation, I could see that. But I think, you know, if someone gets hurt on our piece of property, we would be liable for it, I think. So I think we need to do whatever it takes to mitigate that in advance, not act of that.
And if Shaun has a question, I want to ask a quick question. Do we do, do we limit the number of hunters? Do we have permits? So they have to have a...
They have to have a license, they have to have the, the schooling, and there's two people that are in charge of the hunters. It's a limited amount of hunters that go in all this acreage.
So we basically give them a permit? I know they have to be licensed, and I know what to say this is going.
Right. They're coming, you're giving me permission to go to talk to them, and they give me a list, and we approve certain amount of hunters, and that's it.
So it's like five hunters in a day, or whatever it is. There's some set amount, and that, that specific person has permission from, I think it's the Town Forest Committee or whatever, that specific individual. You control the individuals that are going in there.
They'll have a, a piece of paper stating that, that they have permission from the Town Forest Committee and the Town Sherburne, you know, on our land, and Rocky Narrows has to give them also the state license and the paper to go along with it.
Shaun?
So I made this point a couple of years ago, because I used to announce from up there, hunting season started. And to Jeff's point, this is probably a good opportunity, and maybe not even for Town Forest, but for the town to educate people on hunting. Because if you're walking in the woods during hunting season, and especially Boy Scouts, you should know that it's your duty to be wearing orange during hunting season. Those, I can think of 100 places you can walk down a trail and end up on private property that's allowed hunting. Now, it's a little different when it's the town allowing it, but I can guarantee you, nobody knows where the line is, except my father and a few others, between Rocky Narrows and the trustees law area.
Well, certainly would make sense to...
The education we should do.
It certainly makes sense to put a notice in the suburban press, on the website, and I think we could do it at, at our meetings. I...
People that live in Sherburne should understand the rules of hunting.
Right.
They should understand that a hunter has the legal rights to cross the property and go ask for deer. All those things are part of living in Sherburne, not just hunting on the trustees.
David, does that make sense, asking the suburban press to put it, I mean?
Sure. I can get it on, I can get the Town Forest Committee to get it on the, on town website also.
Yeah.
I think, I think Jeff makes a very good point, and Shaun, that I support this, but at the same time, as long as we're properly publicizing it and posting it, posting on the town land, not depending on the trustees, that hunting's going to be happening at a certain time.
Yeah, right.
I think we need to have our own, it's our responsibility to put up our own signs. I agree with you, Jeff.
The only other thing I want to say more on Jeff's safety point there, just anecdotal, because I'm familiar with these woods. I probably know the hundred points you know there. The lot on Forest Street is always packed, more so than the lot on Main Street. Main Street lot, more or less, does the trustees' reservation land, and the lot on Forest Street, more or less, does the, the Town Forest land. I go back there quite a bit. I go jogging back there. I do see a lot of people there. If we're concerned, that's, I guess my only limit I would put on safety in there is, are there any thoughts or any support on maybe not authorizing the full season, October 1 to late November? Stick it to when people aren't looking at the leaves, stick it to November, when the leaves are done, or something like that, when you have less people walking there. It's just a thought that I have. I know it might not be as effective to what you're looking for, to reducing the deer population, but I think it'll do something, because that place is packed in the fall. October's peak, you know, peak foliage season, so.
There were, there were times that the hunters couldn't go in because there were no parking areas for, last year. So, I mean, it was, the Lee peoples got there first, and that, so they couldn't, they couldn't go in, so.
Got the boat hunter that used to hunt off at the back of my house on Saddlebrook, tended to do it mainly in the winter.
Right.
He had the best lineup, line of sight, but...
Yeah.
Is there any flexibility on the dates?
Because that's seven weeks now, where people are going to have to...
That's probably the state set hunting season.
But we can limit what's authorized on, on the town property during that season, which I'm very concerned if he's hunting in the winter, by the way, but I won't go down that route. You know, I guess that's a great, kind of my, so that's seven weeks now, where people are wearing orange, doing whatever, looking up at tree stands or whatever else, and it's kind of the peak hiking season back there. I guess just a thought is that you, you don't allow the full bow season, you allow part of the bow season. You know, that's, we can control that. Obviously, we can't change to bow season. We can change to the season within that, that we allow it.
Or, I know, I heard you say that, Shaun.
Possibly time of day.
Time of day. Like, very early morning is probably, is a popular time for hunters, and I think that's, you're not going to have as many people in there, like, at dawn. That's when hunters want to be in.
Or eliminate Saturday as well, or like that. That's when it's really packed. So I know they already have Sunday eliminated, and if hunting's important enough, they can take vacation time for four hours on a Wednesday morning.
You do the same restriction at Farm Pond for boats, early morning, taking in and out boats in the morning. Similar restriction.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to amend the motion to limit the time, the time period?
Good thinking.
Dave, what would you think, what would you think of doing weekdays only? Now, no Saturdays or Sundays?
I...
You said Sundays aren't, aren't allowed anyway?
I know.
What if we took Saturdays?
I'm going to, I'm going to speak, because I used to be a hunter, and I've hunted in four different states, in New, in New England. The one statement I have always said, everybody in Sherburne owns the land. Everybody should have their chance at it. So, I mean, if you guys want to say, you know, Monday through Friday, that's fine. I know you're going to go over there, and you're going to have dog walkers Monday through Friday. So, I know Saturday is a huge day. Would probably be a better day if you want to take it, you know, take that one out.
I think, I think we're basically just eliminating Saturday.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's... Yeah, I think that's, I think that makes sense to me, because those are the days that I feel like it's probably the most packed.
Yeah, the days of school, kids will be running around, whatever else, anybody's gonna be on a Saturday.
It is. Right. Monday through Friday, the kids are in school.
Right.
So...
Right, and that's when the kids are in school, so, yeah.
So is it your motion?
Yeah, I'll move to prove it for Mon, restrict it to Monday through Friday during the hunting season.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Perfect, thanks, David.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Perfect. The next item on the agenda is, uh, library project schedule update from Barry Moore.
So I just have a couple of slides. We're gonna post these on the library website after, so they'll be available, and I'll make sure Diane gets a copy of them. Jim Cole, Chair of the LBC, is joining me.
This is the hiker license. Oh, we ran it out.
Is it up? There it is, okay.
Slide view?
Doesn't look really focused. Can you guys see that okay? It's a blurry? Okay, so we're gonna provide you with a, a bit of a project update. Um, we've got members of the LBC and the trustees here, and Jim Cole is the Chair of the LBC. I want to thank David and Diane and Sharon and everybody at Town Hall for all their continued work on the project that seems to be going on and on and on. But we hope that we kind of cover some of the highlights here and share with the public where we are, um, you know, at a very high level. So we're gonna talk about challenges, we're gonna go through some of the cost exposure, and then we'll talk about some considerations for a special fall town meeting, which is what we had been asked to come back with, so. So, Jim, you want to take this one? This is kind of at the highest level.
Get the lefty, I wasn't warmed up yet.
Um, so if you really look at, at the challenges that we've been facing, it's really oriented around the general contractor, campus, and the design. You can see things here are itemized, uh, per each one of those categories. If you look at the first thing under the general contractor, when, uh, some of the things we've been dealing with is they're, um, constantly changing and somewhat unrealistic schedule on a regular basis. And that has an impact, uh, across the board. Some of it's related to the subcontractors, um, some of it's related to the fact that we really can't track the cash flow. We can look at the burn rate, and look at the schedule, and it should line up with regards to, um, what their monthly requisitions are, and it doesn't really line up, um, to meet their schedule. So that's a challenge. And then the project oversight has been a challenge as well. They've had significant changes in personnel, most recently two weeks ago with their site superintendent. There's now somebody new, um, that's probably the third change there, and they've also changed project managers. There has been non-conforming work product on the site. The foundations have been, um, first of all, let me back up. There's non-conforming work. They've also relieved two subcontractors of their responsibilities. Uh, one was responsible for the foundations, and the other was a site subcontractor, which Five Star has taken on themselves. Site protection has been lacking, there's been a lot of water infiltration because of that. The building is not weather tight, still today, I'm sure we, when you drive by that, you'll notice that. That causes all sorts of issues downstream, um, which relates to that water penetration. And the finishes, uh, there are finishes in there now, for instance, that should not be in there due to water infiltration, so there's gonna have to be rework on those. Staff turnover, I mentioned. There's been untimely and unresponsive pricing submittals. When there's a change, they're asked to price it, doesn't come back in a timely manner, can't proceed with authorization or decline, you can't do the work. So that's been a real, uh, impediment to getting work done. On the design and campus, we, the site design has been revised to accommodate the fire suppression system outside of public, uh, water zone one. That's been a challenge with the DEP. Uh, the campus improvements have included a shared generator, which actually is gonna be a benefit to the town. And Mary, I don't know if I'm covering the next slide, or you are, but there is gonna be a benefit to having that, uh, as, uh, part of this work that's going on. Uh, some of the other revised site work includes the tree removal, curbing, sidewalks, parking, and meeting certain code requirements. And then really more specific to the design team, Beacon Architectural, there've been a lot of errors, omissions, coordination issues, uh, things that have not been designed to code, and they've had to be redesigned. And that's caused delays and cost to the job.
And I would make a note that the, um, the DEP's consensus that had been in place was lifted on August 2nd, so the town did receive word that the revised site design was, um, acceptable to the DEP on that. So, um, what does all this mean? Well, it means that there's been a, a sort of notable cost impact to the project, and we've had increased construction costs. Um, we've been tracking those in the OPM cost exposure log. Um, I think we were provided with the most, the most recent one earlier this week. As Jim mentioned, a big piece of this was the relocation of the fire suppression tank out of the, outside of the zone one. That's fondly referred to as CPR 29R at this point, and, um, that is a very large ticket item that, um, we were anticipating, and we finally got some pricing on it about a month or so ago. Site changes that we talked about, um, which do include the shared generator. Some of these costs, we had agreed, would be, um, shared costs with the town. They're all project costs at this point, so, you know, I'm not gonna get into the detail on that, but there was, you know, at some point when the generator was coming for the town hall, and the generator was coming for the library, we merged those two together. And as Jim talked about, you know, there's been sort of this ongoing, um, challenge with changes to the plant, to the project that were not driven by the owner. We did not request them, but they were things that needed to happen to either meet code or to, um, meet the design intent of the, of the project. Does that characterize the right way? Yeah. Um, one of those big areas is the roof. Um, we have a very complicated roof with, um, tile, and the original design did not include the appropriate roof buildup. Mark Brown on the LBC can speak to that, he's been intimately involved with making sure that it gets done right. Um, there was an issue around how to properly insulate it, and Shaun and the building inspector have been working closely with the, um, the LBC, and, you know, to make sure that we have a, an appropriate approach to get that done. So, um, that's been a challenge. And then in general, just the mechanical, electric, and plumbing. I'm very proud of myself that I know what MEP means. Coordination issues have been, um, ongoing, and they've caused some change orders that were not anticipated. You know, and on top of that, um, just the time, the time to get the project done has caused escalation, and, you know, the experts that we have on the LBC have indicated that it's, you know, roughly five to seven percent per annum is, you know, the, the average. So, you know, we've gone a year past our scheduled completion date, that's another five percent on the project. And then project costs that are not included in the construction part of the contract, which, you know, the town incurs fees for, you know, the OPM services, which are mandated by, um, the type of municipal project we're doing, um, the design fees, you know, that at some point we need them to keep working with us to get the project done. There are legal costs that have been involved, there are insurance costs, you know, Diane's been very helpful, kind of making sure that the builder's, um, owner's insurance has been, you know, covered. But those are things that are happening just as a result of the time of the project extension. And then, in terms of operating the library, we have a lease with the community center that we recently renegotiated, um, we've extended that, um, and they've been very gracious in working with us to extend that through February. Hopefully, we won't need it that long, but we were able to extend that, and there are storage costs associated with the furnishings and the books that have been in storage since the beginning of the project. So, all of that kind of leads us to a slide about, you know, what are our funding options? We know that the project has increased in cost. What are the areas where we can, you know, potentially fund it? And I just kind of captured the things that are available here. You know, we have some potential that there might be some operating costs in the fiscal year 19, operating budget, that could pay for perhaps some of the leases. Jeff Waldron, um, who's our advisory liaison, we've talked a little bit about how that might work. I don't know if you want to add anything on that, Jeff?
No, I just, I'd be pointing out that, you know, that basically some of the, quote-unquote, construction project costs include what I consider operating costs. I believe the community centers really cost of providing library services to the town. So I can see that being part of operating by the, by capital, that's part of the expense. It may be, of course, we decided that it was in the scope, but the, the things such as that, I do more as operating.
Yeah.
And there are also things that probably would be capitalized when people on the, or if we, if we have an asset, we'll keep it free.
Um, we mentioned the town budget, there was approval at some point for a new generator for the building, but again, we need to tease out what sort of funding that might be. The trustees had discussed in our last meeting, you know, is there additional funding that could come from the library endowment? Um, there are restricted funds, but, you know, is there a possibility that there are some monies that could be expended towards this? And that's an active exercise that we're undertaking. Um, you know, are there additional fundraising opportunities? I think, um, we had always anticipated that there would be, you know, like, the next phase of fundraising to replenish the endowment once the project got completed, and I, I, I think there's, um, you know, there's some, still some naming opportunities with the project, but we really need to get the project moving underway and, you know, in a shape for, um, opening before we can spend energy on that. There's potential for post-project recovery. I, you know, I don't know all the details, but we have contracts in place, and I'm sure that, you know, at the end of the, the project, we will, um, you know, go after whatever we can in terms of, you know, potential post-project recovery.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that. So we are tracking all these costs as potential exposures. That does not mean that we believe that the town is gonna be encumbered with the, all of those costs.
And so that kind of brings us to the special fall town meeting to approve additional costs. We, um, went to the town in 2015 in the spring and got unanimous support for the project, and we had outlined an anticipated contribution of about a million dollars. The following year, we went back to town meeting, and we outlined additional need for the roof replacement, which had been identified as having some deficiencies underneath it, so that it felt like it was the right time to do it with the project. So we got an additional $190,000 at that point. And I think, kind of in response to the selectmen's request that we think about a special fall town meeting, Diane had asked me to reach out to the administration, uh, at Dover Sherburne High School, and we checked to see if there are any dates in November and December, and apparently we have a very active youth group doing lots of activities on the stage during November and December, so there were no dates available. Um, the, the earliest, or the latest dates available were October 24th and October 25th. So I guess, you know, the question that we're sort of bringing forward is, you know, we know that we've committed 1.2 million from town funding towards the project. Um, we want to make sure that we, um, we know that we're gonna need more money to get the project done. There was an anticipation that we would need to borrow more than the 1.2 million because of the timing of the state grants that we've been awarded, but it looks like that's gonna need to be larger than that. So how do we continue to get the project done, pay the bills, and not cost the town more money by, you know, delaying any further? Um, and I think something that was brought up at the last meeting that we had together was, you know, we want to make sure that we get the number right, so that we have a, a single ask to get the project done.
Yeah, and that's the real tricky part here, because you can see, uh, the timing considerations. We'd have to have that vetted by the week of September 5th, was, which is essentially two and a half weeks from now, and collectively, we don't believe we'll have a good handle on that to represent a town meeting.
And I, I don't know if I've represented this correctly in terms of the timing considerations. I looked up special town meeting requirements on the state website, and the secretary had this outlined. I didn't know on the 14-day prior if the actual warrant language needs to also include a specific dollar amount. I know Paul Durensis had indicated it could potentially be vaguer and, or vague up to, um, a certain point where you've then inserted actual dollar amount, so.
I think on that note, what we've talked about was you can, the warrant wouldn't necessarily have the dollar amount, the advisory motion at the actual town meeting would include the dollar amount. So that would come from advisory, once they have their public hearing. Yeah, exactly.
And I, and I didn't know what the advisory public hearing prerequisite would be.
No one back, or...
Yeah.
And then what, would you change it on the floor? So you'd kind of have the, have your meeting establish the exact amount, and then at town meeting, since everything's published, you'd kind of make a motion to change the actual article on the floor? Do you know what I mean?
Well, when, right, first of all, when we write up the articles, we would write out our recommendation, and there may not be in the body of the warrant article, but it would be in our write-up recommendation. But yes, I think, you know, Mary would make this, if the motion's in the right way, you know, we might have to vote against it, and then for, you know, whatever the procedure is to cause a specific amount to be registered. But I think we would need the specific amount for the advisory public hearing that would influence it.
Yeah, I think that's the date where you need to be...
Right.
Close.
Because I think that, that early date...
Real close.
That early date of early September, we would just need to open a warrant...
Right.
To say what we're putting on a warrant, and that language is usually pretty vague...
Right.
On all warrant articles, and then it really gets hammered down by advisory as to what the exact details are.
I think another option to consider, and Diane and I emailed about this, we didn't talk about it, would be, you know, is there a possibility of doing it at Pine Hill? And the DS, um, team had suggested, you know, why not Pine Hill if you're looking for a November, December date? So, you know, if we wanted more certainty on giving ourselves a little more time, and also allowing the project to see where it progresses, um, we might, you know, consider that. One challenge is if we don't see progress on the project, and we don't have approvals on some of the change orders, or visibility into the change orders, as Jim talked about, in terms of the timely and complete submittals, we might not have a number even by the middle of October.
I think my sense for our last discussion was December's not ideal. Pre-Thanksgiving, mid-December would be ideal. This is, you know, maybe three weeks earlier than that. David, what's your, I'm, I'm assuming that October 23rd and 24th can work at this point?
Not work.
Pardon?
Are you saying can work?
Can work.
I don't think that those dates were available.
The dates are 24th and 25th.
I'm sorry, 24th and 25th, excuse me.
You have enough time to get...
Yeah, those are...
And we have enough time to do...
Yes.
In terms of, I wanted to get you to weigh in on the dollar amount, because it sounds like there's a lot of work to do nailing down those costs. My assumption has always been that the placeholder notice can have an estimate, it can have, it can have a range, but by the time of advisories vote, ideally, it should be within five percent. I mean, just so people know what, you know, advisory has...
I think in order for advisory to vote on a recommendation, they would want to, they would need to have...
I think for this purpose, you'd, you'd definitely want the dollar break down, not moving around, and when it goes to advisory.
Right.
Ask them to that, and obviously, they, you know, it's really more questionable at what point in... It's not just a matter, you mentioned Chuck, it's really a matter of getting further along with the project cost.
It is, and then looking at what your real exposure, is there some unknowns here still? And there still will be at any given point in time that's on the board here.
Because I thought Pine Hill worked well for the special town meeting vote on Coolidge Crossing. There was a massive turnout for that, um, so I...
I mean, I do think if it was, sorry to interrupt, if it was later, like, November, or, you know, even right before Thanksgiving, we will, um, something will have happened by then.
We'll have a much better, better handle on it. I mean, that will give us an extra month, essentially.
I personally, I don't have the sense of this board or Dave's advisory view is that Lincoln Collins is nice, Pine Hill's just fine.
Yeah, I think the meeting went very well beginning of December last year.
Yeah.
I think before Thanksgiving would probably be better.
Yeah.
And, but that gives you an extra month from, rather than October 24th, to really kind of button, button things up.
I assume we don't know about Pine Hill's availability?
I don't.
I mean, essentially, for reasons you said, you should make it as late as possible, as long as you're not running out of money. It's kind of balancing that thing between available funds.
And I think based on the burn rate, and Jeff and I talked about this a little bit, you know, the amount of work that needs to... you know, the amount of work that needs to happen and, you know, the record of people on site not getting said work done, I don't think that there's a real risk that we're going to run out of the available funds before that date or a late, even a month later in the date.
Terrific. Again, I don't think we need a vote, but my, I think.
I think what we should do from here is exploring Pine Hill for the week before Thanksgiving or something.
So we'll bring the dates back on September 6th.
Yeah.
We'll just bring the timeline back with the available dates.
Here's Chris Kenny. Thank you for all your help supporting the project. So I will end with, it is going to be a fabulous project. It is taking a lot longer and costing more than we had anticipated, but we have a really tremendous group of volunteers working towards a successful outcome, so I'd like to personally thank everybody, and, you know, we'll get there. So, thank you.
One thing to mention is that we'll need to work, and I can work with Sean or whoever, you know, part of the total construction cost includes the cost of town building, portion of the project, like the shared generator. We'll need to figure out, that's not kind of the library budget, what amount of their total construction cost will be absorbed by the town's, town buildings, capital, and we actually have funds in three years, but the generator will naturally fund it if this whole year's sixteenth capital budget. So we have capital, town buildings, capital project, and then, correct, every mistake, Sean. Capital budget, town buildings, 16, 17, and 18, already.
Right, so I think.
So we need to figure out what portion of those are currently shown in the library construction project estimated completion cost.
Yeah, you should work with Sean and Sharon to kind of break it out and see what's, make sure everything's in the right.
And then the delta.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
The delta gets added.
Right. Because there was also money set aside for some town building, other things related to the town building campus, so.
We do. We need to remember, it still hits the same tax.
Right, exactly, but.
It does.
But it's not all cost overruns on the library.
No, it hasn't.
It was about 80,000.
The excess is 10 years of capital building.
No, no, I know that.
Just getting it in the right bucket, yeah.
All right, so we'll take an action item to follow up with David and Diane on potential Pine Hill dates. Is that right?
Perfect.
And, you know, we'll keep you posted on, you know, progress as we move, move forward.
Anything else up here?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Terrific. The next item on the agenda is the town administrator and somewhat board reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention that the new farm pond docks are in. They went in on Tuesday. They look great, and we're working on the accessibility issue. So you'll notice one of the docks is kind of tipped into the water, and it has something to do with checking out the water levels and then how to connect it to the beach, but it will get connected at some point. And I wanted to thank Jeannie Guthrie and Doug McDougall for working on that, because it's a joint project between Recreation and Farm Pond. Also, the cemetery project is out to bid, the drainage project. Those bids are due back in early September. And I was just going to say the fire chief had visited, but we had already ordered the trucks, but we'd already talked about that, so that's it.
George Eric, any?
Yeah, I have a selectman's report. At our last meeting, we discussed, I discussed putting a group together to meet to discuss the 41 North Main Street property. Soon after our meeting, I met with Darrell Beardsley, John Hegley, and Addie Mae Weiss, and also included on emails with Roger Demmler from the Water Commission and Eric Johnson as well. We kind of came up with four items, plus another one from Roger afterwards, of what we want to go back to the developer with, because they want to come into our meeting on September 6th. And we want to say, you know, they addressed a few things when they first came in. Now we want them, now we're going to go back to them and say, these are, these are some concerns of the town that we'd like you to address the next time you come to our meeting. So let me just run through these, so you're aware of kind of where we're at. The first item was, they talked about a wastewater treatment facility. We want to talk about how that would serve as a downtown sewer district, what the costs of that would be, and who would be paying for that town versus the developer, how we would split a cost of that. Another item that came up was when they were here, they presented the water for their site would be coming from a private well. We'd rather have them talk to us about a downtown water district that they could hook up to and sharing the cost of that as well. I think this property is probably the main development parcel in the downtown area, that this is an opportunity for the town to work with a developer to potentially bear some of those costs for some things that we've talked about for many years that the town may need. The third item was in regards to 120-bed facility. Would that add to our total housing stock? If it added 120 units with no affordable, we would look for the developer to make a donation to a, to a housing trust so the town could then fund the affordable units that we would need to keep, to keep towards our 10% goal based on the additional 120 units. And finally, with, meeting with Darrell from the Board of Health, the wastewater treatment facility would really need to be planned well, engineered correctly with a state-of-the-art facility up front, so we could manage any pharmaceutical or cleaning wastes for a facility that size, because it's a big ask for this developer to want to use the ball fields as they presented to us. So this is our opportunity to go back to them and say, if you want us to consider this, this is what the town would like you to address. And then Roger also had brought up since our meeting, another point that if we did a cooperative, cooperative utility development, he thinks it should be owned by the town, and then we can determine, you know, we could either hire a private contractor to operate it, not let the private developer, they proposed potentially being the ones that operated the wastewater treatment facility. Roger suggests, and I agree, that we would want the town to control any utility that's being operated within our town. So Eric, I know you had some stuff you probably wanted to add.
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot, I'm kind of vetting out. I'm not, I definitely want to discuss certain things more. I'm not completely opposed upon the actual developer controlling the plant, but we would actually control the collection system that actually affects the residents, and those are some details that can be sorted out in there. There's also, you know, like I mentioned before, especially if they operate, it might, it might make it even more so, that they actually would need an easement. This is an interest in land, and if we can actually make this an interest in land in which the developer has some ownership of, like an easement. So let's say the developer has an easement on this land, you're prescribing actually how you actually convey that to them. You'd actually do like an RFP and actually put out the bid, and they would, you can put requirements in there, like they would build, construct some of the town's actual infrastructure, some of the collection system. You know, I think it's an opportunity to do that. It's like you said, and you got to be careful, you know, how much you say in a public setting with any property acquisition or conveyance. But in this particular case, I do think there's an opportunity somehow, that they have this interest, they want some of it, that they can do, you know. When they came in and what they proposed, you know by nature is the minimum that they're going to propose, or what they're going to consider. So that's the starting point, and I think our ask can be somewhere greater than that, I do. I also, I think it'd be interesting to do a water, and you obviously wanted them both at the same time to minimize any, to minimize the amount of resurfacing you have to do with the roadway there and the amount of construction disruption. But in my opinion, and Roger, I think might have a different opinion, it's not as important as the wastewater. If you take the wastewater, you take all the septics out of town, you know, the big issue with downtown water and sewer is that all the wells and all the septics are overlapping radiuses. They're all, you know, mostly out of compliance from each other and so on like that. You also can get rid of all the septics, and that goes away. That whole factor goes away right there. And it also gives greater flexibility of use. So for example, if you had now a septic or treatment plant, you could actually put in more restaurants. I remember when I was on the planning board, our caterer wanted to come in onto Popolo's property there, but they couldn't, because the Title V on catering was just so high that the system couldn't take it, you know. Then they could only, they pretty much only use office space for that. Now you have some flexibility in the uses, and that inherently also ups the values of those properties. So in general, I actually support a wastewater plant in some fashion there. I have a million things to say, but some of the details went back and forth in emails, but.
I tried to keep this, I think to go back to them this first time, I wanted to keep it at a really high level of the main points that the town really wants them to address, and I, based on the group that we had a meeting with, I think these, this addresses the main concerns of the town for this.
Well, and I certainly agree. I mean, it is, I think you properly characterized it, Eric, it is a big ask, but thanks to you and John and Roger and the folks that have jumped in onto this in the, in the middle of the summer. So have we scheduled LeVar's to be here?
They tend to be on the schedule.
They're tentatively on.
Tend to be, they want to come September 6th. They wanted to come tonight, and we spoke to them and said.
Yeah, I did, and I want.
I'd rather have us respond to them first before they come back.
And I want Paul and Mike to vote.
Yeah, exactly. Roger, did you, I know you wanted to.
The septic system takes care of the most immediate hazard, and the water system will be good. My first concern is we don't really know what capacity of this reservoir we put in is going to be. What we did in the original test, well, it looked like it could handle all the neighbors now. I don't think it's just a very cursory test. We're $100,000 short of knowing what the real capacity is.
Right. So you'd need some real, real serious engineering in order to find out.
And I expect we could get some of that out of it.
Yeah.
Potentially develop.
I would think so. Sean, did you have anything you wanted to add? No, I reached out to you the other day.
I may be able to see some movement on water.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. So, yeah, we're going to, I think I'll, I'm going to reconvene that group one last time next week, and then we're going to send a message to the developer as what we'd like to see on the 6th around this.
Eric? Terrific. There's no other items? The board will now consider entering into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, section 36, to consider the purchase, exchange, or value of real property as it pertains to two Leland Farms units pursuant to general law as Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 6, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus DCAM 449, Mass. 444, section 227. And the second item is Mass General Law as Chapter 30A, Section 21, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and the chair so declares pertaining to the library, if his chair does so declare, the board will not return to open session, and I need a second and a roll call vote.
A second, but I just have a quick question. Can we do Leland Farms first, because we have an attorney waiting for that in another room, and then we'll come back in with everybody from the library?
Yeah.
That one should be.
Yeah, this is not.
That's the order, okay, good. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, that's.
And let them know that we're going to go out there first and then come back in here for the executive session with the library.
Terrific. Yeah, that makes sense. We have a second?
Second.
Rule call vote. Motion accepted by Selectman Morale. Having a second, we'll now have a rule call vote. Mr. Morale?
Aye.
Mr. Yon, aye. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Having passed by a vote of three to zero at 8:05 PM, the open section is closed, and we are now in executive session.